Working to keep each other safe. So we will quickly transition into the animal services portion. Sorry, we were running behind for those of you who are new for this portion. Just to frame the issue a little bit, for several, several years in our city, there have been studies regarding animal services with different hopes and goals that be prioritized in investing in care for animals who are voiceless, underly on us, and our city to meet their needs and ensure that they're well taken care of and cared for. It's no secret that we have failed as a city to care for animals and provide the care that they need, along with failing some of the critical infrastructure and workers who spend their whole lives caring for protecting animals. So our interest today is very solutions-based. We've invited experts to talk about what policies we can implement and key investments we can make to care for animals and those who care for animals. So we will open it up, starting with some experts we have, and then we'll move to the community testament portion. So thank you all for being here. And our first speaker is Matt Albert, Esquire, Animal Rights Attorney.
How are you doing? Thank you for having me.
Yes. Yes, yes, please. Thank you for being here, thank you for your work with animal advocates, providing for animals.
Appreciate it, thank you. I do, in fact, direct the nonprofit Animal Sanctuary Against All Odds Animal Alliance. We take dogs from shelters, Rochester, the Bronx County, California, and they're dogs that wouldn't have made it out of the shelters otherwise, they weren't going to make. So when we get these dogs, we say, what can we do different with us so that they could thrive as opposed to fail as they've done before, whether that's in their homes or out of the streets or in the shelters? So I am solution-based. And moreover, I'm not from here, so I don't know all the politics, I don't know all the players, and I'm not here to throw stones and look at the past when we can look at the future. And certainly, there's the new shelter that I found, and I guess everyone found out was that was unveiled a couple of days ago, and I think it's free. But at the same time, it certainly isn't a solution in and of itself. And in fact, if things don't change systemically, it's just going to be a nicer place for the dogs to languish in than where they currently are. You build a better stadium, doesn't make for better football. It's a bigger band-aid, and a band-aid's not going to be the answer here, because no matter how big that band-aid is, this is an epidemic, and that's what we have to address. And there's never been, and I've been doing rescue 15 years, and I'm sure everyone else has been doing it, a lot of people are the same, and the one referring rescue to rescue that's the same is that there's never been as many animals with no place to go due to space. So you could create a few more spaces or seven, two more spaces, that's not going to fix the issue. It doesn't create new homes. It doesn't fix the broken shelter system. And if the system is broken, you need a new system.
Thank you.
And as long as more animals are just being born into this epidemic where there's too many dogs and not enough homes, we're simply feeding the epidemic. And what can we do to, instead of feed the epidemic, to cycle this epidemic, to choke this epidemic? And it's a pretty simple solution: you ban breeding in the city of Rochester. And how do you do that? It's not that hard. You take, you know, a drop in the bucket of this 2.6 million, you put it towards enforcement. You've got people running around measuring the grass, ready to take the people for, you know, growing their grass too high, or throwing their trash cans too close to the curb, too far for the curb. Instead, why don't you, you know, find a couple of people that's going to work on tackling this epidemic so that they could comb through these barber sites, these marketplaces, and they could find who's breeding, and we could write up an ordinance, and I could draft it up, and I could have it come by the end of the week, and we basically charge people for breeding. Maybe we grandfather any of the people that already have their, you know, their state act licenses or whatever else, but you prohibited people from breeding, end of story. And I guarantee you, you punish it by fines and/or jail time, it's an ordinance. You can go to jail on a speeding ticket, you should be able to go to jail for the inhumane act of putting more dogs into a surplus population. It's not just inhumane, it's a public health issue, it's a resource issue, it's stretching budget, and it's stretching people's patience real thin, as you can already tell. I'll tell you this much: we don't need more pet bulls, and that's coming from someone who has about 10 of them right now in his organization. Well, we don't need more of them right now. So everyone that thinks they're going to profit off of making these dogs and putting them in these rickstands and everything else, just to pop out a few puppies that they can sell, they should have an away thing coming. We don't need more Frenchies, we don't need more doodles, we don't need more Tubs at this point. And that's coming from someone that, you know, loves dogs more than, you know, more than it loves anything else. But the fact of the matter is, we have to address the systemic issue, we have to humanely cut off the pipeline. So that goes not killing animals for space, because animals aren't being born in breeding dens. There's other ways we could go about it, it's not all about enforcement, it should never all be about enforcement. It should be about empowering people, running state neuter clinics, giving low-income families the help and the resources that they need so that they could keep animals in their home, sponsoring training seminars. I know me and my team work huge on training, and that's how we would work with these animals that we do, we'd be happy to come out here and put on a show so people could learn proper animal husbandry, proper training techniques. So that instead of calling us and saying, hey, we can't have this dog anymore, we can't be potty-trained, we can't walk on a leash the right way, we can teach them how to do it. So we can make this a community-based, a community-based system that empowers people and empowers animals, and from that standpoint, I'm offering up any of my services for whatever I do, to not just speak before you guys, but to do the work. And maybe, maybe if this is all done the right way, because obviously, a lot of people here that are ready to get on board, we could come up with something really progressive, really new, and become a model, an animal
Yes, we have a few questions.
Of course.
We have a few questions.
Please.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, so the ban on breeding in the city of Rochester that you're proposing, are there other municipalities that have passed this? And do they use, like, what is their enforcement mechanism? Is it fines?
Well, I mean, so the state agricultural market law is right against breeding. However, municipalities could obviously impose their own ordinances. And I could certainly look for case studies, excuse me, case studies and models. I don't know that it's necessarily been embarked upon. I know some people might say, well, it infringes upon people's civil liberties. And my answer to that as a civil rights lawyer is, when your civil liberties are creating, are wreaking havoc on a population, are creating inhumane conditions for animals, then you're not entitled to go civil liberties. So with all that in mind, I could certainly do some more homework, do some research, but this has been my baby, my, you know, idea for quite some time, and I know it will work, and it doesn't mean we've got to start throwing people to jail necessarily, but I guarantee you, you make a couple, make a couple arrests, bring a couple of people to court, it'll have a ripple effect, and there won't be, the need for enforcement is people will find other ways to go about making money.
And do you currently need a license for breeding?
So you don't, if you are breeding from the same household by law, and it's section 4 of one of New York's state ag and markets, you could produce up to one litter, which is nine puppies a year, from your own household. That's detrimental. For one thing, backyard breeders do more than that, because nobody is regulating. That law isn't placed, nobody regulates it. So with all that in mind, that is currently the situation, with even nine, that's nine more dogs than we currently need in an overpopulated population that's what we're currently in.
So my final question for you, so we definitely have an issue with the population of animals going into the shelter, right? And you put it so well, expanding the shelter doesn't necessarily address the issue of overpopulation, and animals will still languish in the shelter. So essentially, how do we, like, what strategies have you seen are effective in moving animals through the shelter more quickly, and also preventing animals from ending up in the shelter in the first place?
Sure. Well, I think some of those novel ideas, such as if the city were to sponsor training seminars, get the word out, I also think if you had, again, if you put it on the state to pay well, but it shouldn't be anything too exorbitant, you can create a position for maybe a social media marketer, and it's their job, they can come up with all the innovative and creative ways to get these dogs seen, to get these dogs networked, but I think, as I mentioned, the bigger problem right now is there's just not enough funds to put in. So I think, but again, I think it's got to be a holistic approach, enforcement for breeders, and then also funding when it comes to, funding when it comes to creating programs and, you know, where there could be seminars and state neuter clinics, but you want to involve the community, and that's a big thing that we're hugely on, is sort of empowering people through the gift of animals, because once people start realizing they can handle their dog that they currently cannot do, they're not going to want to get rid of their dog, and it's going to give them much better feeling to keep that dog in their home than it is to surrender that dog to a shelter where it's very well being put down.
Incredible question. Yes, tell us about this one.
Yes, so in terms of the state laws that regulate breeding,
Yes.
Is there any way to enforce that? How would you, how would you
So any, any agency, I mean, would be entitled, police would be, at least theoretically, they'd certainly be entitled to enforce any state law, so they could. Will they? No. And there's actually a section of ag and markets, it's 30, sorry, a little sleep deprived, but it's 351 potentially, where police are mandated to enforce animal food laws. And I could provide that section to whoever's interested. The issue is when people, Ms. Merritt's colleagues say, this dog's being abused, this dog's being hurt or neglected in the backyard or anything else, what police say is, okay, well, call the SPCA. They can't do that by law, they are derelict in their duties for doing that, and there's lawsuits that can be brought to enforce, to have a judge compel them to perform their legal obligations. The answer, the short answer is, while anyone can enforce these laws, nobody does, and it goes unchecked, and that's, again, a big part of the paradigm and a big reason for the situation that we're now in.
And final question, so in Rochester, there have been several instances where someone has called the police for help, and they end up shooting a dog. There are lawsuits against the city regarding it, it's a real issue, right? And that ensures people are called for help, and so many other cases come as a result. Have you seen strategies to interrupt that cycle from happening?
I have, and I've also, in fact, brought some of those lawsuits against city of Rochester police officers for shooting that dog. It's not just a crime against the dog, it oftentimes it's a crime against a man. In terms of strategies to address those issues, a lot of it could come from, some police are shooting dogs simply because they can, because when they don't see the people in the neighborhoods that they're policing as people, then it's easy for them not to see the dogs as dogs, and that's how they could go home and definitely call the retrievers while shooting pet bulls in the city, I've seen. But you also have a lack of education, a lack of training, and certainly, there are people who train officers in terms of how to recognize dog behavior, how to address potential threats, if you will, in a humane manner without just going to the dog. Many don't do it all the time. So certainly, that would be another good use of funds, I think, is to have some of these individuals who do these trainings, dog behaviors and so forth, go to these local police stations and teach them how to humanely deal with dogs, if nothing else, if it gives them less of an excuse to do so.
That's really helpful. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Albert, and we will definitely follow.
I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
So up next, we have Ms. Jessica Phillips, the President of GRASS.
Just to clear up any confusion, Detective Merritt, my name is Jessica Baglio, so if you see that in places, that's me too. So first, I want to say thank you so much for holding this and for inviting me to speak. I am new to the role of President for GRASS, but I have been involved with various rescue organizations throughout my adult life, starting at age 18, so not super new to the rescue world. GRASS does maintain a positive relationship with several other local rescues who operate in a similar way that we do. We are entirely foster-based, we are entirely run by volunteers, and we, all of our money comes from donations from the public. We work tirelessly, putting on fundraiser, after fundraiser, after fundraiser, oftentimes donating a lot of the prizes and, you know, general funding for that, money out of our own pockets. Many of us spend money out of our own pockets taking care of our foster animals. I know I'm not the only one who has fosters at home, and probably more than they feel like they can stay safe, taken care of. I personally have two medical fosters right now, I'm spending $170 on cat food for one of them, because he has a severe medical issue that requires this prescription diet. He came from Greece Animal Control, that is what we primarily, you know, focus on as our priority, and animals that come into Greece Animal Control that could potentially be adoptable, come to GRASS, dogs and cats. However, we do help throughout Monroe County and beyond when we can. Two years ago, I took a cat from Genesee County somewhere, way out in the middle of nowhere, went out through a trap. So we do see how the care of animals in the city by the city of Rochester has a huge ripple effect out into the greater community. And I kind of want to touch on a few of the things that if we were to address them in the city, could have a huge, huge impact elsewhere. Mr. Albert had kind of talked about one of my bullet points, so that saves me a little bit there, about reducing populations by doing something to control, but you can ask a lot more suggestions for that actual enforcement piece than I do. But what I'd like to really focus on is the starling shortage of veterinary care available in Monroe County. Even as a personal owner of a pet, you know, one that you adopted yourself and are just trying to get routine visits, there could be a month waitlist just to get into, to have a routine appointment for a healthy cat that just needs to receive this vaccine. So when you take that kind of demand, and now you're adding in all of these extras, all the animals that are out of custody, all the animals that might be in surgery removing part of their colon, so that they don't have to eat this $170 food, or what are the cases? If we don't even have veterinarians who come to our shelters, it doesn't, it's great for the community, that's great, but it doesn't, to address the issue at hand. We're going to have to, anyways, okay. So finally, thank you again, and I really hope that you consider allocating some time and resources, particularly to the things I mentioned with getting veterinary services up and running for community members. The more community members we have with the staff, either their dogs, the cats, the fewer unwanted pregnancies, the fewer puppies and kittens that we get calls about that no one can take care of. We are drowning constantly every day in never-ending requests for help with abandoned, abused, neglected, injured, starving, unowned animals in our community, and it kills us inside. I have to say, no, we can't help it. This is, for many of us, myself, I think many of the people in this room, feel as though we were put on this earth to help the animals, and when we have to say, no, I see you have a cat over there with, you know, half of its face ruptured from an infection, we got nothing, we can't, we don't even have the resources to travel and euthanize it, like, we don't, we don't have it, we've got, it pains us, we stay awake at night. So I'm asking that you please help us by, you know, holding meetings like this, talking stories about how it really address some of the problems and moving forward with solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, so you mentioned vet care for low-income cat owners, but I didn't hear any, sorry, but I didn't hear many solutions. Did you name them? I know you mentioned free clinic.
Not necessarily free, and I don't know what the solution is. I would love to put my head together with other rescue folks and brainstorm and talk about however many ideas we can come up with and bring them back to you. I personally didn't have that much time to prepare, and I think a lot of times we don't have the answers.
And have you shared these solutions or these issues with Dr. Green? I have a real concern, I have a real concern for especially folks living homeless with pets, and I think a free clinic is an amazing idea, and I'm wondering if you share it.
I have not, but I would be happy to. A little bit of medical, yeah, yeah, yeah. She, they have, I have a personal, like,
Do you have any other ideas in the panel?
So I think one of the goals of this is compiling community inputs, especially now with a plan to potentially invest over $2 million in the shelter and animal services, and it's going to be important that that plan is informed by others who love animals, and it's really a community-led implementation to ensure that we're considering everyone's voices in how we do that. So thank you so much, and we'll definitely be following that.
I'd be happy to continue the conversation.
So up next, we have Lisa Tidings, a licensed veterinary technician.
Hello, are you okay? Very good, that's why. I want to start private thinking, councilmembers, Margaret Smith, who's in for organizing this and for inviting me to speak. My name is Lisa Tidings, and I was employed as one of RAS's two licensed veterinary technicians for six years, residing in this vast neighborhood. During my time at RAS, I also served as one of the few certified nutrition technicians, and in the absence of a full-time veterinarian, I was the vital representative in the shelter animal pathway project team. I mention this because throughout my entire time at RAS and up to present day, most of the information I hear and see spread across social media in regard to these areas has been false, and I just urge the community to not always assume or believe what we pre-emptively ask of the people on the inside doing this work every day. When we fail to do this, we are creating a culture of bullying and negativity, and it directly impacts the mental and emotional health of the staff, and it contributes to the burnout that I know they are already experiencing. I know this week I've seen this, I lived it, and I absolutely believe that the well-being of the staff directly correlates to the well-being of the animals in their care. We need to remember that the enemy is not within the walls of RAS. My experience as an employee under the administration and the Department of the RHS, the spilt lies, gaslighting, a complete lack of transparency, and an absence, and an absence of genuine support and true leadership. It's important to remember that RAS has been historically defunct. In 2011, RAS's budget was just over 1.5 million, in 2023, the budget was 2.3 million. When using the CPI inflation calculator, 2023's budget is the same buying power as 1.3 million in the year 2000, so this means that there has been only about a 1% increase in the budget in over 20 years. But what I believe is crucial to understand is that in the same 20-year period, RAS went from a 20% line release rate to a 90% line release rate. So that means that the staff is now carrying for 70% more animals, feed, housing, enrichment, medical care, with almost no increase in budget and no staff positions to support this, not enough staff positions to support this. So let's say on an average day, the shelter houses 80 animals, which we know this number is typically greater. If you look at the ASP's guidelines for the capacity for care, you would see in order to provide proper cleaning, feeding, and enrichment for 80 animals, it would take a total of 37.3 hours. So this means that if RAS has five staff members designated to complete these tasks, it's a luxury, we don't have time there, it would take each staff member seven and a half hours, basically an entire workroom, when in reality, these staff members have to children when the shelter opens to the collar. And while this should be the sole purpose of an animal care technician, the rest of their day is filled with multiple other roles and responsibilities, ones that can easily become multiple other full-time positions. But one person doing the job of running is a very common lead there. To further exemplify how critically short staff RAS is, I want to briefly mention that RAS currently takes in 3,500 animals a year with two part-time contractor DMS, one licensed veterinary technician, and no veterinary assistants. Lollipop Farm currently takes in 4,500 animals a year, that's only 1,000 more. They have currently three full-time veterinarians, seven licensed veterinary technicians, and five veterinary assistants. In preparing for this year's budget, with full knowledge of staff shortage, increase in intakes, and the shelter constantly being at or overcapacity, the mayor denied RAS's request of a veterinary assistant, an additional ACT, and a clerk. And while 60% of the staff received much-needed raises, bracket increases, they failed to honor the veterinary team. The ACOs and the ACTs received a considerable and very well-deserved bracket increase, while Allison and I were given less than $1 more an hour. I just want to remind the members that the position of an LVT requires a college degree, a state license, and continued education in order to retain that license, and that position is still bracketed lower than positions that don't even require college degrees. When I applied for the position of RAS, our RAS's second LVT back in 2018, it was extremely competitive. There were multiple applicants, and I had to go through three interviews. When I submitted my resignation in early September, after truly believing and hoping that I would spend the rest of my working life there, they opened the position up for applications within two weeks, and that position still sits vacant. The government, a government job as an LVT used to mean you hit the jackpot, and while the field is incredibly short, and that's an LVT is now more than ever, the few LVTs I did reach out to opted to stay at their current jobs, little to no benefits, and some even making less pay. And this brings me to the vacant veterinary position. The salary still needs to be increased, especially with Lollipop also looking to hire. As a veterinary professional, I can tell you that it's going to be incredibly impossible As a veterinary professional, I can tell you that it is going to be incredibly impossible to find a good qualified vet to work as a single veterinarian in a municipal shelter with the city is currently operating. One of my fears is that the city will hire the first vet that applies for the job. And I can tell you from experience that this can often be worse than having a vet at all. In 2021, in a desperate attempt to fill Dr. Newhart's position after his retirement, the director at the time hired the first and only vet to apply. She was completely unfit and unqualified for the position. Allison and I made multiple reports and pleas for help to both the director and Dr. Green and we went to court. I eventually had no choice but to report this vet to Humane, who found her actions worthy of charging her with animal cruelty. And that is why we did not have a vet before the arrival of Dr. Ray Chris. I want to also mention that when Allison and I were subpoenaed to testify against this type of court, we reached out to Dr. Green and the city's attorney for guidance and we were pardoned as well. But I want to be able to know that we did go to court. No, we didn't. But the real work that needs to be done after obtaining that qualified veterinarian is essential if the commissioner constructs a positive and supportive working relationship with both the vet and the director, as opposed to a relationship built upon control, lip service, and deceptive manipulation. As was the case with Dr. Ray Chris, robbing her of any stability and leading to such a mental and emotional burnout that it forced her to resign, much like myself. Her brilliant ideas for the future and valuable input fell on deaf ears and her expertise wanting more. I know that her hope is that RAS's future veterinarian doesn't experience this kind of blatant disrespect. So why would the mayor now allocate funds to completely renovate RAS rentals? He doesn't care? Well, the answer is because he has no choice.
For what?
In 2020, in 2023, the Association of Shelter Veterinarians, veterinarians as I refer to the ASP, they released their updated guidelines for standards of care that must be implemented in animals throughout the country, animal shelters throughout the country. Shelters have until December of this year to comply with these new guidelines, and the current panels fail to meet the requirements. So he is mandated to make these and many others sorely need renovations throughout the facility. And because the city waited well into 2024 to start taking these guidelines seriously, Mayor Evans and Dr. Green are now feeling the pressure of coming. A choice Mayor Evans could have made, he could have taken a tour of the shelter and shaken the hands of the incredible staff of dedicated volunteers who keep the place afloat every day, something that he's yet to do. I believe the bottom line though is that nothing is, is really going to change, not until the people and the positions of mayor and commissioner change. Unfortunately, you cannot, you cannot make someone have compassionate empathy, just like you cannot make someone stop weaponizing your compassion and using it against you. And I hope that the voters remember this some election time. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much, Ms. Tidings, for your service to our city. With animal, something folks do have love, care, and just this passion to do the right thing and support animals. So I can only imagine how difficult it was for you when you decided to retire. For us in the city, that should be a wake-up call. We should be addressing some of the issues you're mentioning urgently. I want to open it up to questions from my colleagues.
Yeah, I just wanna, it, it's incredible to me that you shared how short-staffed the shelter is and recently one of their employees who had been there for a long time have retired and not given a reason why. And it seems incredibly irresponsible to decrease staff at a time when we desperately, it sounds like more staff. My question is, the $2.5 million, is that what we need? And I know that the shelter itself, the building, isn't the whole picture, but is that not sufficient, do you think, with the plans that they have to lead the need?
Yeah. For the entirety of everything that the ASP guidelines is calling for, I don't believe it would be. I think that might be a good pressure for someone with a lower expertise in what sort of building renovations and actual things need to occur. I do have, I did pronounce my apologies for the small francis, but it's a little bit. Dr. Ray Chris and her husband, they spent hours combing through the city's budget for the last 20 years. And they did come up and I wanted to just give you the happening of this of just basically a breakdown of everything over the last 20, 23 years. Well, yeah.
Thank you. When, considering the renovations, you know, there, there's what's bare minimum managed by the state and there's probably what's best practice. What are the things that you know would need, because I know like isolation and things like that. What, what needs to be included in the plans for the shelter?
So the, the ASP guidelines are pretty extensive. I do know, as we know, the cattle renovations are a drainage system. So I don't know if the money that was allocated for the cattle renovations events, including the drains as well. I, I don't know if there, how much money is really going into, so you need two separate isolation units. I believe, but then I believe Allison was telling me that they're actually minus into one. Like, they're supposed to be two separate, but I believe they actually said it was coming from now. So how is both cats and dogs, which is just a horrible idea. You take a sick cat and then you pop its cortisol, stress from a dog being in there and it's asking for disaster. So, but from what, the last I heard, they were taking the only one as opposed to the reference of the two. So, but things like that, I, I don't believe are going to cost any extra money. But again, the list of things that, if you can find the ASP guidelines anywhere like down there, it's super expensive. There is a kind of a bulletproof point checklist. It's a lot. It's a lot. I, I'm shocked at what they're trying to do now with the building because I wouldn't believe that it would be doable with the building that they have now, but it doesn't really seem like they have much of a choice.
Thank you.
So one of the big things I'm concerned about is the health and well-being of the staff and also the, the volunteers who are dedicating their time and doing a great service to our community. Do you have any strategies or thoughts of what could be done better to ensure that they're, they're kept safe, cared for, and there is protection?
Well, I think one of the big things obviously is I think we need to hire more. I think we need to make sure we are paying appropriately and bracketing our physicians appropriately. I think that, I, I see most of them are all putting in overtime and it would be nice to be, and I know as far as mine, I never went to court the other week. It's always far more than that. And it would be nice to just either not have to do that or not be threatened about having to work overtime, not almost feel like, feel like you were in trouble for staying and doing your job correctly. I think a lot, she was, is transparency. Being transparent with them, but then also being transparent with the community about what the shelter and its staff needs. I mean, this community is amazing. If you ask for something, let me tell you, we asked for water once, I promise you they're in our balance of water to last for the next 10 years. Like, they will help, they will respond. So I think that, I think the shelter needs to be allowed to be, like I said, transparent of that. I think also in protecting the mental health of the staff, I think that something needs to, I know it's hard because you can't go after every social media bad guy, but something needs to be done about a lot of the false information that is put out there. What I can tell you is that really nothing impacted my mental health more than having to do the incredibly difficult work I did every day and then have to read or hear about someone else who has no idea the runnings of the shelter, how they think I did my job, how they think I can do it better. So I think the, having some sort of space where there could be someone represented allowed to go out there and defend the staff and, and prevent this villainizing of them. I think that could be a really, a really good way to protect their mental and emotional health as well.
And I, I had a chance to visit and meet the staff and I mean, just really truly credible, dedicated people and excellent volunteers.
Castle Chris Smith?
Can I mention one thing? Because I know we, and I think we had a couple of questions, how charming, amazing for these speakers. I think that, just to throw this out there, Lollipop has, obviously this huge renovation that's happened right now. An enormous portion of that is being dedicated towards the community, towards education, and how to support the community with their animals. How can, there has to be a way, how can we establish a relationship with that? How can we somehow jump on board, become a partner with that? I mean, it is, it's a huge opportunity, I think. I think our community is so desperately in need of that. The community offered us something that was very passionate about lives there and that's honestly where I saw my career going. But I think that there's a ton of opportunity there to look Lollipop to establish relationships and opportunities that we are just not taking advantage of.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Tidings. And we will follow up. I think Castle Chris Smith has.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the pay bracket. What does a vet do?
So a licensed vet tech, why, because we basically do everything outside of performing actual surgeries and making diagnoses. Now vets can leave us what we call standing orders on shelter medicine, who don't have a vet on site. The vet that is on contract can leave us a standing order. So if your dog A presents with this, 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 treat it with this. So usually, shelter LVTs can do that. But pretty much outside of performing the actual surgeries and again, making diagnoses, the LVTs are responsible for everything else. The major thing between being licensed and not being licensed is we are responsible for inducing anesthesia, maintaining anesthesia, or recovering anesthesia. So literally the lights are in our hands all day long, as well as performing CPR and other emergency checks as well.
And, and without adequate staffing, it, it means that instead of focusing on that important job, you end up picking up other tasks to keep the shelter ready.
Oh yeah, well, especially without the, in the absence of a vet just doing, you know, a lot of those major roles like sitting in, you know, the vet wing, supervising meetings and things that take away from what you could be doing, but it's, I mean, I don't honestly know how Allison's functioning right now. And I know her, her mouth is extremely real and I worry about her daily. She's just, she's carrying a lot right now. And I give her all the credit in the world for standing here and doing that.
And you also, of course, staying for as long as you did and continuing to advocate, I promise.
Thanks, yeah.
So we will now open it up to the to the community speaking portion and see if that's available with you.
Yeah, I do want to apologize. Unfortunately, I have another engagement where I have to leave around 8:30. So I received the evidence and that because I don't care about what your, what your testimony is, but unfortunately, I mean, you're not a friend to me.
And this meeting is also being live streamed and recorded. So she'll be able to watch and catch up. And we have all your contact information, so we can follow up. So we will start with Lori Thomas. And based on the value of speaker sign up, we'll have to keep statements to two to three minutes. Just to ensure everyone has a chance to, to speak if you're through.
May I have to speak? I have to sign up.
Oh, absolutely. Anyone here can speak. You didn't have to sign a card. But if you could write your name down on the sheet, so I can follow up.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So we're here for solutions and I have a solution. Watch your video because I'll let you get it. Yeah, for what? While we can do the premier veterinary teaching school in Northeast, we can partner with Cornell, we can partner with the LPL, we can partner with the Community Resource Division, we can partner with Central Park Zoo, we can partner with RIT, we can partner with U of R. We can take that property that's on the management and grab all those new apartments with the premier huge area of land that the city of Rochester owns and turn that into a premier veterinary school which will attract people to our city, which will increase our population, which will increase our pet space, which will pay for this. The mountain police should be housed there. The K9 needs to be housed there. We can house a full staff with two full-time veterinarians because now we're a school, we're teaching people. We can involve our children in the community as volunteers and as junior veterinarians. I have a student who's 32 second graders. They loved it when I took them to the zoo. They became junior veterinarians. They loved, this was 32 students who couldn't read that and never be here that they built their zoo. They could all read and they were all interested in the animals that we studied. This is a rapid science. There are solutions if we work together. That entire area can be the focus of community service, jobs, it will create jobs. It will compete, create community. Have any of you who prefer the career teachers from Atlanta, Georgia, watch the show, it's on Netflix. It's an amazing program that we can invite to Rochester and help us create this thing of, thank you, Rochester. We are a rural community. And we are not a big city. Okay, and we got lots of animals here. We got lots of elders here with animals. They don't need to take a bath. They can't afford to go to the back. Okay, we can work on a sliding scale. Doesn't have to be free for everyone, but it definitely needs to be free for our seniors. We can teach our children that dogs are pets. They don't know that. Right now, dogs are protection. But no, they need to be cared for too. And that creates empathy in our children. That creates a sense of belonging in our community, in our neighborhood. So that great big area that's nothing's happening to right now can make Rochester clear to me who just invested themselves. You've got a lot of expertise here in what that, that area can hold and what that area can do. Let's do it. We shouldn't rival Lollipop Farm. Now, try to be in competition with them for stray animals. We can take care of ourselves. Come on.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We appreciate you consistently showing up and solutions you presented.
Are you going to ask any questions?
I think we're good. I think we're good. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Maggie Huff. I work for Verona Street Animal Society. That's the nonprofit that helps foster animal services. I was hired in 2019. Prior to that, I worked for the same company, Lollipop Farm, for 14 years. And I was also a consultant for the Society of United States in the area of shelter and nutrition. So I tell you that because I know, I know a little bit about animal shelter. I'm proud of the shelter work. I wouldn't work there if I weren't proud of it. And the work that the staff do, and my volunteers do. We generally get plenty of volunteers in and out every single day. And that's 160 people a month. Some of them are here constituents and they're here tonight. These people would not come back every day if it was the shelter or the health hall that some people own and they think that it is. And I think you know that. Ms. Barney, you've been over, you've had a tour, you've been our director. I do invite anybody that would like to see the truth and sound like a consultant to get me called up and do a tour like I do every single volunteer. Our shelter results and practices compare well with any shelter you can name. And in particular, our customers, Lollipop Farm, where I restored and you can compare our animal results to theirs. We took in over 1,600 stray dogs in 2024. That's one at four per day. Every single day, our animal control officers are struggling to find a space for dogs that they have to bring in. And a couple of people have already talked about the supply and demand concern, where are these animals coming from? But if you allow, we do have to take care of them. We are taking excellent care of them. We are taking excellent care of them. And you know that about that. My request to you, if you can do your own tech finding by coming over, try to avoid being manipulated into thinking our shelter is a vet's shelter. Because as my former coworker Lisa said, that hurts the staff, that hurts the volunteers, that drives away potential volunteers, that drives away potential adopters. So let's stop bashing this shelter, which is a disaster, this city of Rochester. It doesn't establish enough very small resources. Thank you.
Ms. Huff, can I ask a quick follow-up question?
Oh, sure.
Very quick. Yes, and again, very grateful for the staff and the volunteers. I think that's a theme we all are aligned with. And even again, seeing them and how much they care was really impactful for me. What areas do you see with this investment coming in, which is a significant investment? How do you see it best used to support the needs of animals and staff that continue to meet the larger areas of needs we're seeing?
The biggest obstacle right now is a couple of people have mentioned is our inability to get the non-vet stack. And that's a countrywide problem. Veterinarians have to spend as much on their education as medical doctors. You never make as much, there's a very high suicide rate among veterinarians. And that's something our shelter doesn't know how to fix. So if some magic can be done where we can get a full-time vet and all the other help that Lisa mentioned that is needed, that's going to go a long way towards helping us. But I also am thrilled that Van Halbert brought up the idea of the overpopulation of animals. Why are we getting one of the four stray dogs every single day? Because they're getting thrown away. And people may get tired of the dog, they haven't had a puppy. I don't know. That's not my area of expertise. But I do hear animal control officers struggling every day. We got a clean kennel and bring in three dogs. And that is our mandate. That's a city shelter, we have to give the animal control. We can't stand at the door and say, don't bring in any more animals. Other shelters, so-called no kennel shelters, can. And because now we have our dogs and we come and dump our healthy dogs, none of these dogs feel excessive behavior concerns, but it's that position that we're in. So if we're going to put this I want to fight through some Asia, there was a way to deal with it once again.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Thank you. Next, we have Joanne Mutch.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Mutch. I've been chatting with her on the quick, like, totally supporting City of Rochester in many ways. One of the ways that I do is get a shelter. And I, in one way, I've been a foster mom and then adopted a dog, Enzey, in mid-Jayuary, signed a paperwork and said, okay, I'll get a loan through the new grant. And it's like, oh, this is great. And I know they work hard at the shelter, absolutely, there's no doubt. What I see is sympathy iceberg because I'm moving to the shelter. So I see things, but some of my background gives me some insight. I was a Medicaid, Lolly View Soldier from New York State and I was a nursing home minister for eighteen years. So I pretty much know what to look for. If you talk about residency, you're talking about healthcare, you're talking about staffing, public relations and funding. The solutions, I can't give you many solutions because I don't know the fine details. And as many, many people to me know the details. I know they're reward, that's obvious. I know they're dedicated. They're wonderful people. When I step in there, anything I can do to help them, I'm there to help them, not necessarily to visit. So getting back to Enzey, I went through one heat session with her and now going to second heat session in June. And I'm starting to get a little bit concerned because I have been in contact with Lollipop Farm, they called me and Shelter called me. Thank you for your patience. Like, that's very nice, but what are we going to do here? And I understand that Lollipop Farm is undergoing major renovation. Now, the other is, I'm going to look this together because they're inter, they're duffed tail together, and that is donation, donations, monetary or models. You have food of choice or pages, donations, present and future, and public relations. Desperately need public relations. I have to come forward and say, when I say that I got my little pit bull from the Rochester Brona Street, people go like this, they are, oh no, did you really? And I was innocent, I don't know where they were coming from. But it does not have a great presence in terms of public relations with the community. And I'm saying not only the city, but the community at large. Monroe County, we all support one another, period. And the question is, how effective is Brona Street in carrying out their mission? And I'm a donor, this, and the question I have in my mind is, do I or do I not support Brona? Because I just listen from Lollipop Farm all the time, mainly telephone calls. My husband recently passed away, I got a telephone call. Are you kidding me? From Lollipop Farm. So that's another story. But when you order this, it'll generate money.
Running out of time.
Pardon me?
You're running out of time.
Well, if we're to generate money, I think if it hasn't been looked at, look at your metrics. How successful are you doing? Percentage of adoptions, neutering, percentage of adoption return, the average number of days dogs, cats stay in the shelter and percentage of dog euthanized due to overcrowding. Me as a donor, I want to know how effective your organization is before I commit. I want to, but I have other competing not-for-profits as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's do it all. Next, we have Jonathan.
Thank you, yes, I'm a city resident. I live in the East District. I have volunteered at Rochester Animal Services for about five years. I'm currently a dog walker, two mornings a week, and also I help out with the cat foster program. I want to quickly say before I get to my main ideas that I agree with the positive changes that have been suggested by virtually all of them. It's just that it takes someone on and committed to the city. And so that's kind of bottom line. I think all the ideas work, but I'm very anxious to see if one of them is going to come through. So I came here to my experience at RIS and I have two messages. The first is that I'm very, very proud to be a volunteer at RIS and I'm a totally blind in that. Second, RIS needs a strong commitment by the city to fund our programs actively in the present. Everything that's been said, that we said a times mentioned, and also to plan ahead toward the creation, the building of a new shelter and the addition of new staff positions to better serve our human community and their animal dependents. Things like training classes, there are so many things we could be doing if we had expert staff and room to do them. In spite of social media critiques and false accusations that RIS is a highly skilled shelter, which it is not by any stretch of the imagination. We have a live release rate of two eighty-eight and ninety percent, which is very high for municipal shelter because we cannot turn any animals away. And so, and so in spite of a lot of what appeared, and I know Lisa addressed that as well, and how to moralize that is to see some of the vitriol that is hurled at the shelter, the hundreds of hours that I've spent here, allowing it in as shelter staff and volunteers, giving the best possible loving care to thousands of dogs and cats and the occasional rooster, chicken, turtle, capster, anything, rabbit and ferret. Before our new shelter director, Stacy Papadopoulos, was hired last summer, we experienced an extended period, an unreasonably extended period without leadership, without professional permanent leadership at the shelter. Nevertheless, staff and volunteers did their work. They faced challenges together and kept the shelter going. The reality is, the shelter is crowded. The building, not as standard as it uprooted and are mandated and kind of forced on us, is ancient and too small. This winter was harsh and unbelievably icy underfoot. Those paths with the sidewalks around the park where we take the animals were unbelievably icy and dangerous for taking the dogs out, although we did it every day. And there aren't uneven enough walkie-talkies for the volunteers who are walking dogs, which is a very, very important safety measure. Also, laundry ties up, it's somewhat under better control than it once was, but it still is a near problem. Regardless, everyone strives not only to provide the basics, food, water, a clean kennel, daily play yard time and walks for the dogs and enrichment for the cats. This is not a hellhole, hellhole for animals. But also, beyond those basics, shelter and shelter staff and volunteers really get to know the animals, they show affection and they determine how best to meet their needs. Many dogs and cats are able to stay safely at that RIS until they are adopted. Others who have special needs or some of them who can't tolerate the shelter environment, it's just too stressful, go to foster homes or rescues. This is possible because people at the shelter pay attention, pay close attention to behaviors and physical needs and strive to find the best placement for each dog and cat. Basically, these animals are not simply warehoused, they are taken care of and their individual needs are taken into account to the degree where necessary, possible. Two more quick comments. We have not had a full-time shelter vet and that's come a little before for many months. And we are short at least one vet tech, we probably could do more than two. This is not ideal, but keep in mind, and I think everyone should keep in mind, we comes down so hard to shelter, that there is a nationwide shortage of vets and vet techs. Research done in 2024 shows that this shortage is much more severe for shelter vets because it takes a very special kind of person to be a shelter vet, especially in the municipal shelter. So this is a huge challenge and it is not a challenge of our making or Rochester government's making or anyone who's here, a huge challenge for our ongoing search for a vet. And in the meantime, I have to say we are more than grateful to Dr. Filiachi for her expertise and her work in the clinic. And she's there more days than she used to be, space and use are being done more quickly than they were for a while. And so everyone is putting in just a superhuman effort. Finally, the shelter needs more resources than the city provides. That's just the bottom line. Some increases in funding have been made available recently and this is to be discussed, but I respectfully ask that the council and the mayor work to support RIS much more strongly in the future and that the dream, the goal of a new shelter building not simply be put off as something that's impossible. It should be something that you figure out how to fund, how to raise the money for, where to put it and to create something that the city can be proud of, that can be a safe and wonderful working environment for staff, volunteers and volunteers. Thank you.
Next, we have a question.
Oh, sorry. We've always wanted expertise, that's okay, you made some really good items and I just wanted to know, if you could prioritize three, what would it be?
Three?
Three what? Three changes or three? Yes. Okay, top three, it could be a change, it could be... There you go, I see it, about that. So, yeah, yeah. I mean, pie in the sky change is the new shelter, a new building. And I mean, that is, that just has to be there. So, you know, that is, I might have to put it on, it just has to be here. I would like to see the low-cost Spain neuter program that we used to have for long-term shelters. People who apply and have helped get their point set out and do all of that in the paperwork. I don't know what happened to it, it was funded with some special fund that they, what was this? Before the pandemic, after the pandemic? It was a number of years ago, but you know, people got a voucher, it's a voucher system and they could go to the animal, on Bay Street, the community animal, Rochester Community Animal Clinic, I should call it.
There are other events that also are.
And there was another event, right, right. But anyway, that voucher system got lots and lots of animals, dogs and cats, who were at very horrible prices, like very, very horrible prices. So that is very important. And then, I mean, you know, staffing is an issue, staffing is pretty minimal. The reliance on volunteers, volunteering is wonderful and I would want to see the number of volunteers cut back, but in some ways, the shelter depends too much on volunteers. And so there are more than when a couple of volunteers maybe can't come in and walk and we have sixty dogs and two or three people to walk them. And then staff, you know, of course, they try to pick up the slack, but with staffing so tight and a few volunteers missing like in a day, you have a pretty untenable situation. So I think that staffing is really, is really an issue.
Thank you so much. And it sounds like there's just an incredible group of people who are, who are working there, doing superhuman things, along with volunteers and everything else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I mean, I know the most about the dog walkers at this point, but the attention that they pay to the dogs they walk, the feedback they give their staff on behavior, the things they watch out for and, and, you know, communicate, you know, that this dog is obviously having this trouble because they're having a problem on their walk or, you know, whatever it is, is just, is just remarkable, and it handles volunteers and staff under, under an incredible time pressure as well, so.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Paul. I think I'm a volunteer, actually married to Beth, we both volunteer at the shelter. She's a walker, I clean the documents. Many of it, there's vitalists that have put hundreds of hours in each week and thousands of hours each year. We heard Lisa talk about the fact that social media and all the posts, now the staff, I run into desperate meetings with the volunteers. Now, we're dedicated to ensuring all the dogs, cats and other animals are cared for and have a clean, safe place to live. Walkers get there at seven in the morning. My wife and I wake up at six, we go, I clean the kennel, she walks the dog. Sometimes, last summer, when it was really, really hot out there, people would be there at six in the morning, which means again, with five, we're all dedicated to make sure that all the cats, dogs and all the animals well cared for. Seventy-five people are still there watching the dog. I'm just saying that we all dedicated to the dogs, go to make sure that they have a safe place to live. Also, it should be clear, I mean, I know Lisa, I've been with her five years, but Lisa was a tech, we were starting this year ago, but I know all the staff there, Lisa Allison, and they're all dedicated and they're all very much care for the animals. So the problem is that we would not be volunteering, the animals were mistreated, abused and neglected the way they are portrayed. Whatever social media posts and representations were made about the shelter by people who are not there, the implication is not only the volunteers and the staff don't care about the dogs, but we are actually abusing and neglecting them. This is not only devalorizing, but offensive. Now, for one thing, I go at seven AM, I clean the kennels. I was an attorney for forty years, I retired, I know how to clean dog poop, it was right in front of the alley. So anyway, you can post pictures, which has been done, you know, the. you can post pictures, which has been done, you know, the feces and the urine there, and say, this is an abuse of the animals and go down with the time. It doesn't. I get there at seven in the morning, I mean, the dogs poop and pee. There's nowhere to hide it. A lot of them come in, they're not housebroken, they need to be in the kennel. Now, from seven o'clock to seven in the morning, they poop and pee. That's the way dogs are. So you go in and clean it up, and make sure it's clean. And then during the day, if the dog poops or pees, people clean it up. Sometimes I'll say that because someone took a picture of poop and pee, and it made the animals abused and living it all the time, it's just not the case. And so I just make sure that, you know, it really affects the volunteers. We volunteer our time. We don't have to do it. But then it comes these social media posts about how the dogs are abused. There's something I saw just the other day, and I want to point it out. There's something called Scoop. And someone forwarded to me some online, you know, thing that someone wrote about the animals and how they're abused at the shelter. He called it a kill shelter. Something that really, really bothered me in it. And I don't know who the guy is, I don't know where he got the information from, but here's how he describes some things down there. He says that, um, this is a quote. "Those who put kittens and puppies to death for money must always be encouraged to speak their truth." Somehow he's saying that volunteers aren't allowed to speak. And he's saying that we, volunteers with the staff, go in and put kids and puppies to death. I have the article here, and we show it to you if you want. That's so offensive to me and everybody there, that somehow we are putting animals down and being paid for. And the best part about this article, and I'll show it to you, is at the very end, he asks for money. He asks for money to go on and continue to do something like this. So just what my point is that what has to happen, and no, Lisa said it, is we need to have a strong social media presence that counters things like that. These times that affect people. First of all, volunteers, you know, if you talk, maybe, was up here, she can tell you. People call sometimes when they see things like that and say, what is going on? Am I volunteering at a place where this happens? It makes those of us who are there feel the same way, too. It makes people who want to give money, don't give money. So something has to be done. There's no communication director there now. I would urge the city to go ahead and do whatever they can. Be your communication director and get a strong social media presence to stop all this magnificence that just isn't true. And it's supposed to fight people who have authoritarian motives, fundraising, money, or whatever. They don't know who goes down there. We do. We're there. Do, something has to be done so that the social media atmosphere is negated. Because otherwise, it just causes volunteers to quit. Now, what Lisa was saying, you know, she worked there, Allison, with another vet tech. They work all day long, they come back, and they find all the social media blasting them. And, you know, I talked to Alice the other day, and she says, I can't believe that they think I sit here euthanize these dogs all the time, and there's no problem. So anyway, that would be what I would say, is get a communication director who knows social media, can counter all these things, and put that online.
Or they did land. Or take Cali House. Or, yeah. Or when we ask for transparency, which is a lack of transparency.
So everyone will have a chance to come on.
Listen, I want to say another thing here. I am a volunteer there. I look over at this audience, I see very few volunteers. You people here, I don't know who you are, some of the gracious people, you are the problem. All right? You are the problem. You gotta put things on.
So, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Watkins. So thank you for your testimony, and I definitely understand how emotional it is to feel like what you're doing is the distance true. So I want to acknowledge that, and thank you for your testimony. We have wonderful participants.
She had to leave for it, to go pick up on your pet, to her rescue.
And, uh, Pablo? Someone in Pablo?
Hello.
Pablo? Sorry, I can't read your last name.
Burgos.
Burgos.
How you doing?
Hi, Burgos.
You've got so long. My name is Paul Burgos. I'm a volunteer for Raw. And I never come in and catch them. And every day that I walk and go to work on Sunday, I always see mad cats, cats all over the streets. I'll be seeing them. Sometimes I pick them up myself in bags, put them in dumpsters and stuff. Dogs also. And it worried me because that's every day going on, that I see cats running everywhere on Cutting Avenue, crossing the street. People coming to my house that are, yo, I can't take care of my cat. They usually take care of my cat. So I'm a volunteer for the cats because I'm a cat lover. And, you know, we need a lot of help in Rochester for these animals because they need help. They can't speak. We are the speakers for them. And I just beg y'all, I need your help with these cats and dogs out here. Because they die out there. They die. They step on them like they, and then they keep on going. So, you know, my, my concern, that's why I came here today, to let y'all know that I'm an animal lover, and I can't keep on seeing this every day. All right?
Thank you so much.
Did you say that you're a Raw?
Yes, ma'am.
Always?
I do volunteer for Raw.
Yes, yes. There is certainly a concern regarding some of the, um, the pet owners and their inability to access care for their pets. So I really appreciate you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have T. Sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Someone in T?
Yes, my name is...
Yes, thank you.
I'm brand new here. I'm from saving online lives, brand new nonprofit. I haven't gotten a C3 status, D Core community right now oriented, and my focus is on the cats, the feral cats and the friendly cats that are getting ear tipped and being put back out there with very little chance of survival because they're friendly and they've been neutered. They're ear tipped, so people think, oh, they're ear tipped, so they're feral. And they're not. They're not feral. They're friendly cats still. And if they've been in my rescue for, let's say, six or eight weeks waiting to get vetted, they've grown accustomed to being around me, hearing my voice, my friendly nature. Those cats have a seventy-five to ninety percent mortality rate if they're put back out there ear tipped. This needs to be understood. If they're ear tipped, they're not, the people are gonna be like, oh, they see the ear, the ears cut, they're feral. They're not all feral. They're friendly. I'm trying to get those cats into homes. I had just, I just started this. And last weekend, I had five surrenders from people who could not afford to have their cats vetted. They, one was a domestic situation, domestic violence. It broke me up that she even had to leave her cats. And the only reason I took them in was because it was a temporary situation that another shelter won't do. Like, I'll foster, I'll foster this cat, you know, while she gets her life together. And it's not the cat's fault, you know, that the owner has domestic problems, is struggling with rent or food. You know, I'll put myself out there where other rescues won't. So maybe, I'm learning. The ins and outs of this is very intricate. I'm not good with the politics.
Yeah.
But I'm working on it. Another thing, what Mr. Albert was hitting on now, I'm going from cats over to dogs. On Cinco de Mayo last year, I moved into Hazelwood Terrace in November of 2023. The dogs next door were a constant issue from the time I moved in. They were out there with no shelter, no food, no water, no bedding, and nothing. If it wasn't for Suzanne Nugent and all of her people pulling together, those dogs would have had no food, no shelter, no water. And then I stepped on my door on Cinco de Mayo, Sunday morning. Now, this is after continually calling and saying, these dogs are over there with no food, no shelter, no water, they're in visible distress. But I know it's... I called RAS. I went up there, and I spoke with the officer at Lolly Hop. I sat down with him for about forty-five minutes to an hour. He took the time to explain to me the rules that they have to go by when they go and they check out these situations. They have to be invisible, stressed, there has to be injuries, I mean, you know. And by the time they get there, here's where my problem was. By the time they get to the house, the people had the dogs inside. And then when the, when the officer leaves, they just let them ride that dog. So I walked out of my door on Cinco de Mayo. This is after continuously calling for the whole time from November until May. Okay? The dog, one of the dogs from next door got over, got strangled, tangled up in the line with my dog. And then I'm trying to get down. It was an extremely traumatic experience because I was, I was locked in between two dogs fighting with their chains and their twine. And I'm like, I actually had to sacrifice my thumb to pull the pit bull's jaws off of my leg. Because, you know, it's a puppy, and it's locked. If it was a full-grown dog, I would not have been able to pull its jaws off of my leg. I had to have my thumb reattached, and I still had the injuries. And this only happened because they had eighty-nine dogs over there. And I put videos on social media, and that store, Facebook. Everybody's telling me, call RAS, call them. And I've been talking to them by the time they get there. You can go over there, and you can see it's a compound for training dogs. Damn it, they had the things hanging from the trees, trained the dogs to jump up and attack. I mean, and on the other side of the building, they had dogs over there where, where they couldn't even be seen from where my perspective, because they're trying to hide them from me because I don't want to call them. I mean, this, I would not have got hurt if something had been done a lot sooner. They had nine dogs over there at one time, and four of them, they had the fences where, man, if I could draw you a diagram, you could look and see that it's clearly a compound for training dogs for fighting. I mean, I took, I had a degree in criminal justice, and I didn't even need that to look and see a compound for dog fighting, and nothing is ever done about it. And I can't sue them for anything because they don't even own the home. Insurance, I know I've gone over.
No, it's all good. It's all good. And solutions-wise, like, except, to me, it's pretty clear, like, when you call for help.
Something needs to be done about, like, the thing about the being invisible distress and that, I mean, if the dog is out there without food and without water and without shelter, something should be done right away. I mean, those dogs were mean, man. The dog, the chain was still on that dog when he came over the fence. He was incredibly mean, and they were making those dogs mean. So I'm calling for almost a year. They moved them across town.
Okay. So RAS eventually inter-intercesses?
Well, yeah. After I got hurt, initiated my lawsuits and everything, and it should have been a entire compound. I mean, the dogs aren't there anymore, but they're somewhere else now. I'm sure they're still training those dogs, and there's money involved. And then with these rehoming fees, when they, they don't, I know that we're meant to discourage animal cruelty. We can't say, okay, we can't have no rehoming fees for these cats and dogs, but we do have to take into consideration, people are struggling. They might need a compassionate animal or whatever, can't afford it. Let's make them affordable, where they can get them vetted for thirty or forty bucks, and they can, I'll donate an adoptable cat for somebody that needs to come back. Thank you very much.
I just need to ask, because if you're listening, so I can speak online? And I don't know if that's a separate list.
So some folks who signed up to speak online didn't show, so we're using the physical copy. So if you haven't signed up to speak in person?
Please, can I just sign up online? I may be...
Okay.
I understand they're not listening.
Okay. Could you sign in on, because we are, if folks want to speak? Please.
Thank you very much.
Have this a very good... You can have others who haven't signed in. So currently, we have four people on this list. But yes, please go for your side of the physical copy and just... We are, it's getting late, so let's try to be a bit mindful of time. Anything that's not set, please, please email. We'll follow up, but we want to get everyone who's here, everyone who's signed up, that they're on, that they're speaking. Next, we have Ed Sales.
Yes. 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 Hi. Thank you for your time, for Nancy Furth. My name is Kiebatz Wells, and I just started rescuing a couple of years ago. But I want to tell you what I've seen regarding RAS because I quite frankly have never seen euthanasia yet in my life. So I wasn't planning to work. I love rescue, five oh one C3, and we have pulled about fifty dogs from RAS today on the service. Every year. Almost a hundred and thirty, because I got forty-seven at my house in the last eighteen months. Yeah. I love rescue, five oh one C3. So I, like I said, I apologize, I made some pushing notes, but since I've become in rescue, I have witnessed myself, I'm not an atheist or a atheist, I don't look at social media, they're talking about, but I have seen them stop working with over fourteen rescues that have pulled hundreds of dogs from them. With that, I have also seen the dog euthanasia rate multiplied by seventy-five percent. Many of those dogs, because there's not a good hair or a suster there, are being labeled as aggressive or aggressive towards dogs or kids and being put in a bathroom and not available for assessment and euthanized within seven days. What's the rate? I'm sorry, this is shaping. You're, you're looking at, for the dog rescue right now, you're looking at... Can I keep talking in the low back? I'm sorry. So which rate were you asking? I'm sorry. Euthanasia rate? The euthanasia rate was over forty per week in one week over a couple of weeks ago. I volunteered my dog, Nala, who's now almost two years old and has been created by Genesee Valley OCS, where I work, animal training. And we brought her up and reassessed eight dogs that were labeled aggressive that weren't in on the euthanasia rate. And when I got to that bathroom, I was asked to leave. I really didn't even know there was a bathroom. My rescue started with basically the one I have now. So by not having a spay neuter clinic in our community, it makes Rochester one of the worst, and we're gonna get worse and worse every year with this problem. It's gonna multiply by hundreds, and we're gonna have more police officers shooting dogs. We're gonna have these problems going because these people cannot afford vet care, and our community is not helping them. So therefore, the dogs are vaccinated, they're not neutered, they're not spayed, and they're not trained. With the rescues that were cut off by RAS, they were the training facility. They were the ones that were assessing. By not having them, I now have a dog named Annabelle at my house. I want you to know that a dog rescuer who got stage four cancer four years ago, lost his home, became homeless. About a month and a half ago, we were called by another rescue who saw a freezing dog and a homeless guy on one oh four. Jolie called me and said, oh my God, this dog's in bad shape. We have to help this guy. I didn't know what else to do once I saw a picture of the dog. If we had a movie screen right here, everyone would come together and agree that what happened here is terrible. He thanked them, wrote them letters to help him for a thirteen-dollar prednisone steroid. And three years later, she has a blood disorder, infection, and cost our rescue seven hundred dollars. That man, Jolie, obviously gave me permission to speak and is at a homeless shelter right now. Lolly Hop Park is holding... Lollipop Farm is holding three of his dogs. He has twenty-three days left. And Raz again will not help him. Spay, neuter, et cetera. So I have Annabelle, a thirteen-year-old dog in my house that we have taken care of, and we are trying our best, but we get calls every day because Raz is not even not being nice when they call. So I'm going to move to my next story. I got a call that a mom and dog was in Raz and had ten puppies, one day old. Okay, I go to pick up the dog through Lollipop Rescue. When I'm there, I watched four people that found dogs in the city roster bring them in. So can what? They were poor. They just found the dog. They were upset. I watched them. Some of them. So I literally was there picking up ten puppies in a muck. Okay, first time there picking up on behalf of a rescue. I didn't know what was going on. I watched this little old man bring this dog in that he found that had been set on probably fire and they told him, "Get out, you were false." He said, "I've already been there, you're animal controlling. We can't help you. We're false, sorry." Then they made jokes about it. I went outside with my ten puppies and two pit bulls and put those other three dogs in my car, called Jolene and said, "I'm really sorry, Jolene, but we now have fourteen." It's not, but she was beside herself. "Hi, welcome to my world." So with me rostering Annabelle right now, four more calls of people just begging. They cannot afford the vet care. A steroid is thirteen dollars. A neuter costs a vet right now a hundred and sixty dollars. Regular vets are charging eight hundred and eighty. There is no, we have a list of vets that do them. We have one in Dansville and one in Rochester, not affiliated with Rochester Animal Services, that does these spays for two hundred dollars. The people that are low income can afford parts of that, but without it, they cannot do it. An underdew dog becomes hormonal. Now we have fights. Now we have dogs getting shot and then...
So on ten-three, I worked with the voice of Barone. I got an email, because we're on an email list, that Raz sends out to all the rescues. There's a puppy there that had her rectum hanging out. So seen by the vet, taken in on ten-three, seen by their, the vet, not Dr. Braggis, but the vet that comes occasionally, their contract vet, it's sort of. On ten-four, the dog then sat there five days with its rectum hanging out before somebody picked it up. And the vet notes from, from, the vet that saw it, the contract vet, said, "This dog needs urgent care, emergent care." Five days it sat there. We picked it up. I had to have a procedure done twice. It cost the rescue twice as much money as it should have because it could have been easily fixed if it hadn't been hanging out for five days.
So this is my solutions and I hear a lot of people saying stuff, but you can't have a shelter without a vet.
You can.
First off, you can't have a shelter on the minimum vet tags. We can't have a city like Rochester. It's beautiful. And by the way, I'm a teacher, okay, at OCS. I just want to throw that out there because my kids come to me every day and their parents can't afford the shots and there's nowhere to go. And you know what? Sometimes I send them to Buffalo and that is so embarrassing. It's embarrassing that I have to send my kids and their parents to Buffalo to save their dog. We need a program for vetting our homeless and our low-income people. I cannot tell you a lot enough. When I dropped Joe off last Saturday crying and had his dog in the back, five other people sitting in that shelter came out and they were so upset. The mental, anybody who has a dog knows that that helps mental health. That helps a lot of the issues in there. They're not allowed to bring their dogs. What are we supposed to do? They went to Rochester Animal Services. They were turned away. He went to Lollipop Farm crying and begging for help with his sister who works at Strong and they put him on a waitlist to bring the dog back ninety days later. There's, right now, there is about probably a hundred dogs that people need help with or want to surrender and they are only open from twelve to four. What kind of place only does twelve to four? Who does, who makes it to the shelter to even rescue a dog or adopt a dog between twelve and four? I mean, like, whoever made those hours right away doesn't want to have the dogs because we need hours from three to seven.
And that's one of the suggestions we haven't heard yet tonight. So that's a really big.
So I looked and I saw, I saw the hours and I saw the availability and then I decided to apply again to be a posper, which I applied fourteen times with no callback. I even applied to volunteer and I showed up there one day to clean crates with my daughter and her three friends and I was told that I can't unless I get approved and I had to be on a list. I was not alone. They sent three of us away. That is animal neglect. They shouldn't be working there like that. And the way they laughed at those poor, older, low-income people that they turned away those dogs that night, those puppies I have in my car all have died because those puppies were bashing the dogs that I pulled and went home. So if I wasn't with any of these rescues, I wouldn't have been able to help it. Last thing, transparency is not a bad thing. Everybody in here is all mad about these things and I'm not in this group chat. I just want you to know that when there's a picture out and they all get mad that this dog is hiding, is in the back, okay, not even hiding, but in the back because it's not optimal, and someone finds out that the dog's been sitting there for three days without vet care or four days crying and howling, somebody should be ashamed. Somebody should be ashamed. And no, they just started charging rescues fifty dollars to help them take the dog. They just started charging us to take the dog's dog. Okay, fifty dollars. I don't care why. They're saying, "Well, if it's safe." We are paying thousands of dollars and raising this. This is our community too. This is our community. I have many friends in the police force and you know what they say? They say they can't help. They say they can't help. There's no animal patrol officer on? What animal patrol officer for all of whom from county? On one shift at a shelter that closes at four p.m.? I mean, like, I can't believe it. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'm from West Virginia and they do a better job if their dog's there and that's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. So I'm sorry to be so abrupt. I'm passionate and I cry whenever, but I'm going to go home tonight and take care of this skinny condition dog for this homeless guy, Joe, who is the sweetest, most kind guy and has helped a hundred people, picked up four cats the other night and was going back to the shelter, went to Raz to try to get him help and he was turned away. So we had to leave the cats outside. Mercer's?
House of Mercer.
House of Hearts?
House of Hearts?
House of Mercer. House of Mercy. His name is Jolene and he has no shame. He's trying to get, he went back to work this week and Lollipop has him on a deadline right now for his other dogs that are there of two more weeks. He's not going to get two more weeks because the first two weeks he got to the shelter, they gave him forty-four places to go on a bus to get signatures and not go to work. So two whole weeks of the deadline on the dogs, he had to go sign up, get a sign off from an apartment to say he was there for an apartment that's starting to melt. Now, that's a whole other issue, but the dog.
It's a sensation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your perspective. Kathy Semenelli? We have last name.
I have one more, one more suggestion.
Wait, could you, could you send that to us in writing? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keith. Last name Meyer?
Yeah.
I would just like everybody to know that this is the famous Nancy D. Devire.
Thank you for loving animals. I can tell you, you're the spirit. I've been seventy years animal rescue. My mother, she had a puppy bill and they were worse than you could imagine. Now, I used to be, I'm not going to be that long. I used to be on television with Ray Carmore. I started at Lollipop Farm because he hated that Humane Society. So I used to be on television with him, with Sarah. And then it was, I found out that a lot of people think that Lollipop Farm is not the Humane Society, separate entity. So I'd like you to read something. This was a few years ago. There was a kitten that was stoned against a cement wall, a little kitten. So what happened is a kitten interrupted up die. It was not before a few weeks. And then there was Mr. Whiteford, I think he started the group. And it was, the law was going to be ten years, you could not own an animal if you abuse an animal. And we got up, everybody got up there and spoke except the Humane Society. Now, they were just giving ten billion dollars a few months ago, y'all saw them? Now, first it took a little while. Well, said, "Well, why don't the, why doesn't the Humane Society help us out?" Well, I'll tell you why. They don't want competition. When I found out and I got this list of rules, I'm not going to be that long. Reason why these animals are murdered. Sick or injured. Puppies or kittens under eight weeks of age.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to clarify. This is what the criteria is to euthanize a dog at Lollipop Farm.
Yeah, I was going to tell them afterwards. I was going to. But this is what they were killing, okay? Killing or tacking another animal. Any animal on medication. Any animal has bitten or has been accused of biting. Aggressive in general. Any female in season. Any animal who is pregnant. Any animal still carrying milk for the young. Any animal fur condition. Underweight. Skin problems. Tumors. Family-mended coats. I went out of my mind. So I called up Ryan Storn, Humane Society. I said, "I want to help. I am a hundred percent adoption rate and how I adopt milk, you're not getting a dog, you're not adopting a cat, a kitty, a horse, whatever. You're saving a life. You are saving a life." I called up the Humane Society. I said, "I'd like to help. I have experienced, this has been my whole life." "We don't need your help, Ms. Meyer." I said, "All these animals are getting killed. I figured it out. For every two hundred thousand people, there was an animal. It could be adopted. There was no need whatsoever for these animals to get murdered." So, okay, you'll stay and follow the money. They got money from the county, the state, the city, private donations, corporations. When I exposed them, every TV station was there, radio, newspaper, they tried to sue me for five billion dollars for exposing them. I said, "I would expose you till eternity. These are poor, little helpless angels. The Lord above, you think you're so hot and good, try to create fun." Like I said, they don't want competition. They do not want competition. So they have to get off their high horse. And another thing, to travel many parts of the world, Australia, all of Europe, you abuse an animal, it's like child abuse, plain and simple. I really like this attorney. I think very bullish. Everybody has phenomenal ideas. Phenomenal. And so God bless you. I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Meyer. Do you have three more people trying to, Mike Lor?
Two council members, my favorite ones. How are you doing? Guys, how long have you been, Michael Lor, representing Voiceless of Barone Street? I'd like to thank our council members, Kim Smith, Stanley Mars, Mary Lounging for hosting this event so all of us could talk here today about our concerns with Raz. I was going to set a three-minute timer. I'll try to keep it to that. I promise. I've got a lot to say though. It's important for our council members to hear from the public because frankly, after speaking here for almost five years, I don't have much more patience for the lies we are being told by the current Shelter's administration, Commissioner Shirley Green, director, shelter director Stacy Papadopoulos, ultimately Merrick-Ellie Evans. And speaking of the Merrick, I'll start tonight by referring to the article the gentleman in the back mentioned. I'm going to mention the same article, but he went a little far. I'm going to bring up a couple questions. The article's entitled, "Thirteen Ignored Questions From Malik Evans, Rochester Animal Services, Published Online by Grant Aaron of The Scoop on April 4." According to Aaron, our mayor still doesn't want to talk what's going on, talk about what's going on with Raz. Here's just a sample of questions from the article. Is it? Did Raz fire his community outreach coordinator? And if true, who currently handles those duties? Shirley Green fired him and he was not given a reason after he had a good review from Stacy. Explain that to us. We need public relations. That was the guy who did it and they got rid of him. Did Raz, Green, and Evans ban or threaten to ban volunteers who raised concerns about how animals are treated at Raz? Anyone have anything to say about that? Let's hear it. Why Raz, okay, from the article, from the article that went a little far with some topics, but justified, he asks, "Why Raz has no veterinarian staff for close to a year? And if so, how does City Hall explain leaving such an important position on staff?" Please, anyone, an answer. And because Aaron got, nah, I'm not going to mention that for a moment. That's just awful about dogs being killed. I don't want to go there. Aaron got no answers on any questions. This is a sad fact that makes it harder for Evans, Green, and Papadopoulos to blow off our questions. I say if there's nothing to hide, answer the damn questions. You can tell the mayor with your vote. Now, next. Next, I would like to present the most recent tax return from the Friends of Barone Street Animal Shelter. This is from 2021, the most recent one available to the public. And I read to you from this statement. Assets in 2021, six hundred forty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. While we have no vet, no spay or neuter, and a constant list of basic needs, peanut butter, water, newspapers, toilet paper, please, public, send it to us. Why is there six hundred and forty thousand dollars sitting in a bank account when we don't have a vet? I want an answer. You want an answer? And one more minute. I bet this crowd does not even know that monetary donations raised by Raz at fundraisers meant to assist the animals actually go towards paying employees' salaries. Yes, Shirley Green told that to us in person. Donations made to Raz go towards paying shelter employees' salaries. It doesn't go to help the animals. I think points about it. Next donation. So I'm sure you heard our mayor just gave two point six million dollars to the shelter. What a great photo op, just in time for election season. You know what I say, that money's twenty years too late. Plus, it was pressured to meet the new state shelter regulations going into effect later this year. So let's just see how the staff and the animals benefit from that two point six million. Let's just see when they benefit. Once again, you can tell our mayor what you think with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question.
I'm more than happy to answer it.
Yes, you've been coming to the council for several, several years. So I also do understand your frustration, especially around things like that, having a vet.
When there's money available.
Right, and I think the issue around the vet is multifaceted, right? Like, money, of course. I also think the salary should be significantly increased, but also recruitment is an issue. Yes. So it's multifaceted. So for Voiceless, you love animals, true animal advocates, how will you know that you have been successful in your vision to advocate for animals in our city?
I think the lawyer who began the evening said to us that the system's broken. I don't know how much money it's going to take to fix the system. It doesn't always work that way. Money doesn't always fix the system. We have, like he said, you build a stadium, it doesn't make better football. So I don't know if I have as an answer, but if the administration does not make significant, basic changes to how they function, how they treat their employees, how they treat the volunteers, how they promote themselves, how they have a social media presence, how they don't fire good people, maybe then I'll have a better attitude. If those things happen with the current administration and if they're not up for that job, then the administration should be changed. That's when I will feel successful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Our Bobby K. Evans, followed by Lori Kathy.
Actually, I'll speak for about less than two minutes because there's actually some, there's a couple people here who haven't spoken before and I don't know what they got their names on that list. And you have heard me for the last four years as Voices of Barone Street. And I just wanna make a comment, I wanna thank people who've come here, thank you for arranging this. Um, and I, I guess what I want you to know is we're not gonna be placated with two-point-six-million dollars. I mean, I, I just finally, I've done it that this year.
From more vehicles and a dog park. I think they have a bunch of vehicles sitting in their parking lot to go pick up jobs and from what I see on social media, they don't pick up as many as people call and need pickup. So I don't think they need more vehicles. They certainly do not need to spend any of this two-point-six-million on dog park. What we do need is a spay and neuter program, a full-time vet, vet techs, help people who can't afford spay and neuter, our homeless people, our low-income people, and just people in general cannot afford eight-hundred dollars. The other thing is that, um, they, I heard, I don't know if this is fair, but they're not letting people who adopt their dogs take them until they're spayed and neutered. And if they only have a vet who's there once a week, those dogs sit in the kennels for two or three weeks to get spayed or neutered because they got a vet coming in once a week. So they're taking up space for the five dogs that come in every day. So there's a problem there, that they, they gotta get a vet. And now Shirley Green or whoever said that they had four on-call vets. Why isn't there one on-call vet there every day doing vet work? They have to get it from Lollipop or other veterinary places. Why isn't one on-call vet there every single day? Spaying neutering, getting them adopted, um, having kennels available to bring in more? It's just poorly brought over there. And they treat your volunteers not very well, people quit, and people get fired for speaking up on social media or whatever, and it's just not there. So you guys are our only hope because Michael, Maggie, me, we've been coming here and they don't care. So you are our only hope, Stanley. You guys are, okay?
We are all in this together, you all, so many people who've spoken here. In fact, everyone shares a common love for animals. And that is such a unified thing that we can organize together and make change together. Like, we're all in this together, and thank you, Lori. Also, thank you everyone for still, we're in this together. We're all the ones. So we have two more people. Two more people who wanna come up and speak, uh, come up, introduce yourself and share your thoughts and propose solutions.
Okay, my name is Jill. I am a former volunteer at RAS. I volunteered there for five years from September two thousand fourteen to March twenty-twenty when we closed for COVID. I worked strictly with the cats when I was there. Uh, I had not gone back because when RAS reopened, the director, the director there, Chris Fitzgerald, implemented the HASS program, part of which basically meant that cats were no longer welcome in the shelter unless it was an emergency case. So instead, people looking to surrender a cat or bringing it stray were told to call a rescue group or to just put the cat outside where it would do just fine. Okay, and that meant perpetuate on the people was that these abandoned cats would somehow transform into so-called community cats and be welcomed and cared for by community members. Well, fast forward five years to where things stand now. Our city is completely overpopulated with stray and abandoned cats. They suffer out here as they die, disease, malnutrition, dehydration, cruelty, hit by car, whatever. And rescue groups are taking up all the work on this. They're finding cats with broken bones, pellets from pellet guns, all of the tiny wounds, disease. And these groups are operating strictly on donations. And every one of them is overwhelmed with calls for help from city residents. Their foster rooms are full, there's waiting lists. On April first, I visited Rochester Animal Services to see what they were doing to help these city cats. I entered the cat adoption room and found no cats available for adoption in their room. There were maybe four cats in cages with signs that they'd been adopted. Everything else was empty. There were two cats on the website, they were in their cages, I don't know where they were. Cages were empty. Um, in a city with thousands of homeless cats roaming the streets, it is completely unacceptable. It's obvious that they're still turning cats away. They must be getting calls for help if all these rescue groups are getting calls for help. And they're turning them away, I think, even though there's plenty of room and resources to care for them. And as a city taxpayer, I own a home, pay taxes in this city, and I spend some of my own money to feed some of these cats outside. And I demand that Rochester Animal Services, which is funded by our tax dollars, start admitting and caring for these cats, trying to find homes for them. The current director obviously cares more about how the statistics look in the shelter than she does about humans. The cats are in crisis and need help. And if Ms. Papadopoulos can't find anything hard to do that, she should be replaced with someone who will.
My name is Sandy O'Dell, I'm, uh.
Can you just please repeat your name?
Sandy O'Dell. Um, I'm just a regular person off the street, but I do try and help any feral cats as they come, such as feeding in the winter, try to put houses out for them if you want. I also, um, have had to call animal services to come get dogs that have showed up or whatnot. And recently, maybe three weeks ago, I, I seen a dog, I live near a park, so therefore, I seen the dog, I was like, oh, well, maybe he just got loose. He'll go home. Well, four days later, he came back again after seeing him for four days. So I finally got him to come to me and I called at five oh-six in the evening. I expected someone to come out. I said, we have dogs inside of our house, my in-house downstairs in us. So we could not take them in immediately into the house, it was cold out. I sat on porch with them for two and a half hours. Two officers finally showed up, normal officers, R and D, to tell me that nobody comes out after five o'clock. Unless an animal is dead or something like that. Or someone, a cotton-banded animal, they will not come out. Number one. Number two, why could not, why are the nine-one-one officers or people who are, they are letting people know that? Are you talking to many people? Nobody knows that they don't come out after five o'clock. And we did decide to put a cage up and keep that dog until morning. I got a call from an animal control person that was coming out, she was rude, very inhumane, told me to leave the dog next time and dogs will go home. Obviously, I feel this dog was dropped off or abandoned. He did not go home. I waited days to see if he would go. And this lady literally made me cry on the phone because she said I should've just let the dog alone or let it go. Did I want her to come again because one of the other dogs down at the shelter would be put down because this dog was being brought in? When she came to get him, she was inhumane about it and not nice about, I mean, if you're gonna work with animals, I understand. It's hard to see the abuse or stuff like that, and I realize that has to be a certain amount of hardness. But that's just inhumanity, I mean, she can't give the dog. If you talk nicely to him, you could see, I told her that. And we need, you just tell him he's a good boy, he'll follow you. You don't have to be stern and mean and just, I realize there's different animals in different situations, but when they're that hard, it makes people on the street not want to help. Because we get attitudes like that, and then we hear this, like, these shelters and what's going on, and it makes us not wanna help. And it's, they're hurt, it's a community thing, I mean, what else does it help? But it's gotta be out there, like, I hate to say it, customer service has to be better.
Stanley, I have one more question.
Yes.
If you guarantee us or try to guarantee us that they're not gonna spend any of this two-point-six on a dog park, do you guys have any influence to make that be a reality? That involves that any of that money, two-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-thousand to create a dog park? When there's dogs dying, hurry.
So, that decision, uh, will likely come before a council. Um, the mayor will put it forward to council, and council will ultimately vote or vote it up or down. As you know, it takes a majority, which is five out of nine, to make any decision. So I would be dishonest with you if I made that guarantee, uh, knowing it's, it's not entirely in my control. However, I'm an organizer, council member Smith is an organizer. We believe that anything is possible through being organized through community power and working together, uh, to make whatever you want happen, um, so.
You can see, anybody that was here tonight is not in favor of spending any of that money for a dog park when they need vets and, you know, everything else. It's just frivolous spending.
Thanks. These are the experts. Absolutely, I, I did not hear, and I'll, I'll go back and watch the videos because our goal is to summarize all these and share with the mayor. But I don't immediately recall, I just doesn't support for that.
So we got a petition going.
So let me make sure, if we have security here who's been here all night, let me make sure that there's no one else who wants to speak, and then we can end and we can have more representation applied. Is that okay?
You ready to answer the question?
Yes, let me wrap up the hearing and we can talk on that. We wanna honor, uh, our staff and everyone else who's been here. Uh, so first of all, thank you all so much for coming, give yourself a round of applause. The turnout was incredible and the feedback has been really incredible. I can tell a lot of you have been thinking about this for several years. This is something that's hard work, it's, it's meaningful, and I'm committed as council member Smith, council member Lupia, and I'm sure some of my other colleagues would love to help and review a lot of what you said. So we'll be putting it together, putting out a report, uh, and we'll, we'll be in touch with all of you. Uh, so thank you, and this hearing is now adjourned.